This meeting of the Southfield Board of Education is called to order. We have a full room and co-직원 making their way in, and so obviously we do want them to do that. But at this time, we're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked trustee Darryl Joyce to lead us in that.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for the Lord's hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Charles. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Education, and to my right support members.
My name is Betty Robinson. I'm Secretary of the Board.
Michael Cole, Board Treasurer.
Darryl B. Joyce, Board Trustee.
Nathaniel Lewis, Board Trustee.
Linda Woods, Superintendent.
Please begin your district's findings.
Joan Newberry, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources Division of Minor Affairs.
Thank you. We have Paulette Gardner in the back doing various technical things, Nicole Christian taking record of this meeting, and M1's studio staff, Peter Putnam, Amanda Looney, and Jeff Wolga. This meeting of the Southfield Board of Education is -- this meeting is a meeting of the Southfield Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Number Eight. We will start our meeting off with what we'd really like to do, which is some student and staff recognition. The Michigan Association of School Boards has awarded one of our board members with the Award of Distinction, and I will let Dr. Woods share a little bit more with that and who our board member is.
Absolutely. The Award of Distinction and the certified board member program offer school board leaders a way to develop new skills, stay up to date on educational issues, earn recognition for professional development. And I'm so pleased, as I always am, to acknowledge and to recognize our tremendous boards and particularly board members who have received these levels of certification and distinction. Congratulations this evening goes to trustee Nathaniel Lewis. You have a tremendous board.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Wood, and thank you Nathaniel Lewis for your dedication.
Thank you.
We have a special presentation this evening from our Citizens Advisory Panel. It's an update. Mr. Frank Brock, the Mayor of the City of Lakewood Village, and Mr. Myron Fraser, Councilman of the City of Southfield, are here to present more information. Gentlemen, if you would, or, yeah, let's go in.
Good evening. Myron and I are both appreciative of the fact that Dr. Wood let us out potentially long enough to turn around here. Appreciate it. Something I was very accustomed to. I used to visit my kids there all the time, so, you know. The Citizens Advisory Committee on School Quality and Cost Control, this is a group that I think we've met, we've had about three versions of this so far. Is that right?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, Myron and I think that three times might be the charm, but I really, we hope so. These are recommendations that this committee, we met four times, and put in, they put in a lot of, all the members, put in a lot of hours. Many of the members of this group are in the audience this evening. Could those that serve by the committee just stand, please, so you can be recommended?
Thank you.
We all came to make sure that I presented what I said. The goal of the task force was to maximize the use of school facilities while maintaining instructional quality and reducing operating costs. So that is the underlying theme that we, in all of our discussions, kind of came from. Citizens Advisory Council, they first took, excuse me, first took up the question of finance, and the first set of recommendations I'll refer to have to do with that. The committee recommends that long-term, financing for the district for long-term assets be based on long-term sources of funding, i.e., I think you would say that's the bond issue. So our last bond issue, I think, for the school district was 2003, if I recall. So we think that it's appropriate to plan a new bond issue to reduce the amount of capital fund dollars that flow from the general fund, thus keeping more of the general fund dollars in the pool for educational purposes. So the bond issue should replace the retiring or refinanced bonds and hopefully not increase the current school debt mileage rate. So it's been since 2003, we've been paying that bond down, so there ought to be room there to provide additional funding through the bonding mechanism and still not raise taxes on the public. We're recommending the consideration of closing or selling buildings only when it makes good financial sense. For example, one example given was to demolish the Shanelles' school and sell the property for new housing. New housing, that obviously improves the tax base. It's also, its location, as my understanding, is in an area where there is a desire for additional housing to be made available to the population in that area. There's, I think there's a tenant in the Shanelles' building that would be necessitated, obviously transferring that tenant to another district facility. Use the funds from the sale for capital projects. Bond funds were used at Shanelles', so state laws, I understand it, have required that the proceeds would have to be used for capital projects, not for operating purposes. Recommend the consideration of creating combined hybrid classrooms, live monitoring and online instruction. Use National Honors Society students and qualified volunteers to provide support for students taking online classes. Finance vocational, there's a lot of discussion among the groups about vocational classes and the fact that not everybody necessarily wants to be in a program that goes on for an advanced degree at college, but that there are a lot of good-paying job opportunities out there now that people need training for, but not necessarily a college degree. And so some increase focus on those types of programs, we think would be good as well. At this time, I'm going to call Myron. He's going to talk about some of the other program initiatives. I want to give it equal time here. That's really crowded if I don't let it up.
Thank you, Frank. The program initiatives that we talked about, and there was a great deal of discussion, and Frank kind of led into this, about classrooms that deal with skills that aren't necessarily those kind of skills that lead to a college degree, but are those kind of skills that are in dire need, and you sometimes hear them advertised on the radio or on television of, if you want to become a welder, or if you want to become a mechanic, you know, we have a school for you. And there's always a, there's always a need for those type of skilled trades. So we talked a great deal about that, to make sure that everyone doesn't feel that they're, they need to go to college, because that's a downer for some students, if they think that the only out is to go to college. And I can't get away from the microphone without telling a story. There was a doctor that had, his sink was all plugged up, so he called the plumber. And the plumber came to his house and was there for about 15 minutes and gave him the bill, and the bill was over a hundred dollars. And the doctor said, for crying out loud, you know, this bill is way more than I charge my patients. And the doc, and the plumber says, I know, I used to be a doctor. But what we talked about was investigate the creation of new programs was with the intent to grow enrollment. That was one of our charges, is to repopulate the schools and use the surplus or existing space. We, as a committee, received a lot of data that showed that most schools have extra space, and if we create new programs with the intent of bringing new students in and filling out some of that space, moving students from one school to another to use the space. And I already talked about adding the skilled trade programs, welding, electrical, plumbing, HVAC. Not every student needs to go to college. And we talked about an apprentice program. Have the students work with businesses in the community as apprentices, so partner, partner with businesses in the community, and have an apprenticeship program to fully develop the students that are in those skilled trade programs, so that when they graduate, they'll be able to step right into a job and move on. We also talked about partnering with Oakland Community College, Henry Ford Community College, Schoolcraft College, Spec Tower, Lawrence Tech, Providence Hospital, Beaumont Hospital, businesses that I mentioned, particularly for the skilled trades, healthcare, and engineering. Use the math tool to the fullest extent, and the math tool is a new tool that the teachers, that the administration can use to measure the productivity of the teachers and students. And I understand that it's quite a long deal to get it all set up, but once it gets set up, it's very valuable in evaluating how well the program is working. Also, beef up math and the science curriculum. Every day we talk, we hear people talking about the United States falling behind in math and science, and other countries around the world, developed countries around the world, their students are in competition, they're making us look like we aren't as sharp as we used to be. We used to lead the world. Now we're playing catch-up. And so use the correct science curriculum and math curriculum to make it stiffer. And that's, the University High is a, in large University High, so that we have some very focused education programs. Also the magnet programs. Evaluate the magnet programs to see if they are beating the original goals and purposes to determine if they are worth keeping, and if they're not, retire those programs. We're talking about programs that are foreign language programs and specialized type of programs that students would, would want to come to Southfield High to participate in. We also talked about marketing these programs around the community so that other schools, other, other parents that have taken their kids out of Southfield Schools to other schools know that the Southfield School turns out some of the best students in the, in the United States. Now, I'm not going to tell you about my grandchildren. You probably already heard of them. My grandchildren, they went through Southfield School from kindergarten to 12th grade, and talk to me later.
You start that, I'll tell all about mine.
So I'm going to turn it over, the microphone back over to Frank and let him talk about the next phase of our study.
The next thing I wanted to talk about was the building configurations. The committee did not recommend closing any of the current facilities, as I think the district has learned over time that closing facilities totally does not necessarily save the district a lot of money. So better to find other use for those facilities and make them an income stream. Create K through 12 university prep program to expand the University High School. Create a pre-K program at Eisenhower School is one of the recommendations. Sell the Shanelles' school, which provides of that it be demolished and the property be used for new housing in our community. One thing about school-owned property is that it doesn't benefit any of us anything in terms of the tax revenue. So new housing development would add substantially to the tax base, which obviously the schools also need that, as well as the other cities. Perhaps considering if there's another school that meets that kind of criteria, consider selling that as well for the purpose of housing development. You look at some of these schools, Southfield Laker, for example, has a huge, has a huge parcel of land, but it's on Twelve Mile Road, and it's not particularly ideal for housing property. So the schools that are, tend to be surrounded by neighborhoods more that are not in use at present time would be the best candidates, obviously, for repurposing in terms of selling for housing. Repurpose Leonard's School and partner with the city or other entities for programming, perhaps for senior citizens. You and I can decide, yes?
I guess, yeah. Eventually.
Eventually, yes. Level out the enrollments at Levy and Braceletary by moving grades six through eight from Braceletary to Levy. Make Braceletary a K through five school. Locate K-12 or K through 14 university prep program, which includes the University High School, to Southfield Laker High School. Consolidate Southfield and Southfield Laker High Schools at the Southfield High Facility. I was talking about, in the future, if we reach the point where you can't support, you really can't justify having two separate high schools anymore, that would be when that kind of consideration might come into effect. It's probably not something that would be recommended for the immediate future. I think that finishes our major point. There's a lot of recommendations in here that would require, and I think, a lot more study by the board and by those faculty of the schools to see what might make the most sense in terms of moving some programs forward. Again, we thank you for allowing us to come and present these recommendations. If there's any questions, Myron will answer them.
I do wish to publicly thank Mayor Brock and Councilman Fraser for your presentation, but the entire committee, which was, I was not a part. I was in my office and around, but this was the work of the citizens of Southfield, and I'm very grateful for your insight, for your ideas that will, ideas that will be used by the district to take to the board for consideration. They were just ideas, none of them have to be implemented, but some of them may be implemented. And so the work that I have ahead with a leadership team is to look at all these recommendations and to collect as much data, information around them, and to prepare the Board of Education as they make considerations for the future of Southfield Public Schools. One of the things that I do know is that we want to create excitement in our district, and we want to do that with the wisdom of our community and the wisdom of our boards. We want to make sure that we maintain fiscal stability for the future. We want to make sure that we ignite ingenuity, and we support that, and that may be thinking out of the box some. We want to embrace collaboration, and one of the things that was said very clearly through many of our conversations over the last couple of months with the board and many of the stakeholder groups that I have met with, our community and our school districts have to be in great collaboration for the success of our society, our community here in Southfield. So that collaboration is critical, and I'm grateful for the task force because they represented our community. And to redesign to ensure Southfield Public Schools have a viable future. These are things that are propelling this conversation and propelling the data collection and the information that the Board of Education will consider, and they will then make final decisions about everything that moves forward in Southfield Public Schools. And I thank you again.
We look forward to the assessment that you bring back to us, and we'll digest it, and I'm thinking traditionally, Southfield Public Schools has been all about collaboration and including our community and partners in decision-making, so I hope that that remains the case, and so far, we are, we are doing that. Now that brings us to our student board representative report. I am going to start with Southfield Laker High School today, and have Ms. Brianna Richardson come to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brianna Richardson, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Southfield Laker Chargers. Laker is home to an outstanding program for students with autistic spectrum disorder. Grants have been awarded to Laker three consecutive years, 2013 through 2015, by the Autism Society of Oakland County. We also received a grant in the fall of 2014 from the Michigan Schools and Government Credit Bank. Because next month is Autism Awareness Month, when I'm finished with my report, I would like to give each board member a goodie bag that was prepared by Ms. L. Robinson. On February 25th, our National Honor Society and Student Congress attended a regional conference at McComb Community College. This event was hosted by Southfield University High School Academy. We love going to support our fellow school from our SCS families. The students were able to interact with students from all over Michigan and learn ideas on school spirit, fundraising, and academics that can be used at our schools. Eight students from Laker gave presentations at this event. Also, this past Friday, members of National Honor Society visited Bernie Middle School to host a leadership assembly. They interacted with honored students of the eighth grade. They completed many activities involving being leaders and cooperating well with others. They held a group discussion with them about keeping grades and citizenship up so they can succeed in high school. Our student organization, DECA, hosted their annual prom fashion show on February 27th. Various prom dresses and tuxedos were showcased from eight different vendors, including Iris Fashions and President Tuxedo. The boys of the day even performed "Can You Send the Rain" from the movie The Best Man Holiday as one of the scenes. Great job, DECA, for putting together another phenomenal show. Our Lady Chargers basketball team won the district championship last week by defeating both Royal Oak and Berkeley High Schools. Currently, our girls are ranked as the third team in the state of Michigan, and tonight at 5:30 at Southfield High, they played against their number one team, Marion High School, for the regional championship. Hopefully, the Lady Chargers won this game, which would give them an outstanding record of 22 wins with only one loss. I look forward to sharing the results at the next meeting. Our boys played last night and defeated Royal Oak in the first round of the playoffs. The next game will take place tomorrow at Royal Oak High School. The boys will be playing girls at 7 o'clock, with some luck. This Thursday through Sunday, DECA members will be away at DECA State Competition in Grand Rapids. Twelve members will be attending, and they will be competing in six different categories. The results from district competition were amazing, and hopefully, these members will perform the same at state. If they win any medals, students will be advanced to the national competition in Orlando, Florida. This Friday, Student Congress is holding an annual blood drive in our library. Red Cross partners with us for this event, and all of the blood will be donated to people in need of blood transfusions and also to sick patients. This Saturday and Sunday, our marching band will be performing at two St. Patrick's Day parades. One will be downtown Detroit on Sixth Street and Michigan Avenue at noon on Sunday, and the Saturday one is going to take place at Royal Oak Middle School at 11:30 a.m. Parent teacher conference will be held on March 19th in our gym from 3 to 5 and also from 6 to 7:30. We encourage all parents to come hear about their students' academic achievements. National Honor Society and Student Congress will be attending the state leadership conference in Traverse City, March 28th through the 30th. Students will attend workshops and also presentations from other students in different school districts. Eight students from Laker will be presenters at this conference as well. Last but not least, I am delighted to inform you all that I will now be reporting at the Laker Village City Council meetings beginning this upcoming Monday, March 16th. I want to thank the board members for this opportunity. I greatly appreciate this. Thank you all for your time, and have a wonderful night.
That's very exciting. The next person I'll call up to present will be from Southfield Regional Academic Campus, Ms. Shayna Haas.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, board members. I'm Dr. Leonard Lewis. Central office staffs and administrators, Southfield School staff, parents, students, and guests. My name is Shayna Haas, and I am the student board member from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. As far as theme, an honorable mention award last month for the 2015 National Alternative Education Video Contest. Mrs. Fuller and Mrs. McNeese combined their fifth-hour classes to collaborate on the project. The students wrote, created a student board, a storyboard, designed a logo and costume, directed, acted, rapped, and danced. Two students, Elijah Craft and William Winfrey, individually wrote, rehearsed, and rapped to the NAEA conference thing, all the board. The message to the film is working hard and staying focused on our goals will get you on the right track to success. The students will receive a total cash prize of $100. On February 27th, Mr. Bowder, Ms. Sark, Mr. Solomon, Mrs. Gales, and Mrs. Henley were invited to present to Council at Academic Leadership at Warren Woods Public Schools. The topic of discussion was curriculum, instruction, assessment, relationship, and graduation. Congratulations to Mr. Solomon for receiving the STEM certification training by STEM.org, as well as Mr. Giles, Ms. Aller, Ms. Heather Brown, Ms. Lee, and Mr. Neal, who made this a reality. Southfield Regional Academic Campus is grateful to be a part of the Wayne State University C2 Pipeline. The after-school program has changed lives in a major, in a major way. We also thank teachers to continue to go above and beyond to extend additional STEM-related learning opportunities for our students, Ms. Sonia Johnson, Mr. Robinson, and Mrs. Solomon. In closing, we want to extend an invitation to our 12th Annual Midwinter College Fair on Wednesday, March 18th, from 6 to 7:30 p.m. To date, 41 colleges, universities, and specialty groups will be in attendance. Have a good evening, and thank you for your time.
Let's then have Ms. Kyra Gradford from Southfield High School.
Hello to the Board of Education, Superintendent, and Administrators. My name is Kyra Gradford. I am a senior at Southfield High School, and I am a member of the band in the Workforce Michigan First Credit Union in our school. I am also a member of the principal council. Here is the Blue J report. The Blue Jays hosted the first robotics district competition, February 26th to 28th. The Techno Jays finished in sixth place. This was a wonderful event with schools from all over southeastern Michigan competing. The Techno Jays take their talents on the road at the regional robotics competition held this week in Traverse, Traverse City. Southfield enjoyed a great two days of ACT testing. Juniors filled the field house last Tuesday and Wednesday to take the ACT. Ninety-eight percent of the juniors took the ACT on Tuesday, and 99 took the work keys on Wednesday. On Thursday, February 26th, honors students enjoyed a morning of fun at Northland Skate Arena. This was a celebration of the over 200 students who made the honor roll, all three car markings for a semester. Fourth car marking is concluding, and we look forward to keeping over one-third of our student population on the honor roll. The Lady J basketball team concluded their season last Wednesday with a heartbreaking loss to Farmington Hills Mercy. The Lady Jays had a very successful season nonetheless, winning its first league championship since 2000. The team finished the season 18 to 3 with all three losses coming to state-ranked teams. Congrats Coach Glenn and the Lady Jays. The Southfield Wrestling Team enjoyed another successful season. The Blue Jays, Gradford, not only won the OIA White League title, but went on to win a district championship after defeating Farmington Hills Harrison and Orchard Lake St. Mary's on February 12th. The Blue Jays won the regional semifinals to Lancer. The team finished ranked in the top 10 in Oakland County with a final record of 26 to 5. The Blue Jay Mattmen also endured a lot of individual success. Six seniors qualified for individual regionals, Erin Collins, Anthony Springer, Christian Daniels, Christopher Mangum, Martice Weaver, and Maken Culpepper. Martice capped off a great season by qualifying for the MHSAA Championship held at the Palace of Auburn Hill this past weekend. Congrats to these individuals. The Blue Jay basketball team concluded the regular season with a season sweep of rivals, Southfield Laker, last Thursday. They are competing in districts this week held at Renaissance High School. They opened tournament play by defeating Farmington High School last night and play Detroit Coe tomorrow. I would like to thank you again for giving me this wonderful opportunity to represent my school to the Board of Education. Let's go, Southfield, where the Blue Jays soar.
And from University High School Academy, Ms. Aries Rutledge.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Aries Rutledge and I'll be delivering the latest news at the U. February 25th, University StuCo hosted their first MAS/MAHS regional conference and it was very successful. With the help of our teachers, our art teacher, Mrs. Briggas, and the art club, we were able to make dirty paper mache Lion King animals and give them away at the end. I'd like to give a special thanks to Laker and Southfield High for supporting us along the way. March 3rd and 4th, our juniors took the ACT and work keys test. We hope that everyone reaches their goals with the help of our newly-added ACT prep courses off of this school year. With four car markings ending tomorrow, March 11th, parent-teacher conferences will be held March 19th from 4 to 7 in the gymnasium. This Friday, March 13th, will be the senior class of 2015 Annual Golden Eagles, where students perform as celebrities and hold mock elections. Recently, we began to offer a UHSA online school store via MyLocker.net, where students can customize their own school gear and wear them every U-Spirit Friday. Next Friday, March 20th, from 6 to 9, University's PTA will have a fundraiser held at Harrell Lane. Everyone is welcome to come out and enjoy a night of bowling, rattling, and more. Book Club will be celebrating Marcus Reading Month from March 23rd to 27th. The whole week, there will be a book drive. Tuesday is a dress up your favorite character day. Wednesday, the whole school will participate in ZIR, which is drop everything and read during seminars. And Thursday is Read My Shirt Day. Our Z Club and Book Club are partnering to hopefully go visit some elementary schools and read to students. Thanks for listening to the latest news at the U. And remember, we're nurturing tomorrow's leaders today. Go Ecos!
Every month you guys bring it. Thank you so much for how articulate you all are and how rich the information you provide. So keep up the good work. Thank you. We are now moving on to the report of our superintendent, Dr. Linda Wood.
Thank you. And I'd like to just share that I started my day today over at Southfield Education Center, where we had our optimist meeting. Our students, our high school students, presented essays on optimism should be a priority. I have to share, I was just wowed. I was so impressed with each of the messages that were provided. I was encouraged by the depth of their insight, the wisdom that these 16 and 17-year-olds were giving to the adults in the audience about being optimistic, about being positive, about looking at the glass half-full versus half-empty, about how that is healthy, about how that is something that we want our society to promote more and more of. And how poised these students were. I'm impressed. And I can trust, and I say it with confidence, my future because of you young ladies, of our children in the audience, of the work that our teachers and staff are promoting, and of the young people that I interacted with this morning. I then left SEC and I went to Adler, because at Adler, they were having their quality assurance review later this morning. And a QAR, as we often call, documents areas of strength as well as areas in need of growth at each of our buildings. And all of our buildings are engaged in that process and have been engaged in the process over the months of January, February, and will be concluding this month. And I was just pleased across the district that there are many, many, many things going on that are going well. And even at Adler, things are going well. Their math data was showing evidence that students were demonstrating academic growth from one grade to the next with our math assessment, something that we want to make sure we use more and more of as we progress in the future. But I have to also say, yesterday, I also visited Stevenson. And I spent a good part of the day as a celebrity reader at Stevenson. And I think the highlight, the highlight of my moment at Stevenson was juice and conversation with our fifth graders. They were so wonderful. And they shared with me at the beginning, "Dr. Wood, we know that you have coffee and conversation with adults on Saturday." And they wanted to have juice, and they did. And they proceeded. They pulled out their juice boxes and they put me on front street and they asked questions of me. And that was what happens at a coffee and conversation. We engage in questions and I try and provide insight. And so they were asking me tough questions. They were asking me to think deeply and they were thinking deeply. We were engaging in intellectual inquiry and dialogue. And that's what I want to see happening for our children. It was fantastic. And it's fantastic that all of these things are happening in Southfield Public Schools. I share, as I move throughout the community, inside and outside the community, that this is a fantastic school district. And I'm very proud of the students. I'm very proud of the teachers that are engaging and moving our children in that level of thinking, inquiry, demonstration of knowledge, and how we're going to move even further in that direction. And so, one of the things that I wanted to say is that we're going to continue. Can we get a little better? Absolutely. But we're going to continue to build that bridge to an even better Southfield Public Schools. And you know, I'm going to ask Jacqueline to come up here now, because she's going to share with us how we're going to continually build bridges to the future, starting with our... Oh, I'm not sure. Are you going to do the kindergarten first?
I think I'm going to do kindergarten last now.
Okay, there we go. Getting our youngsters here in this district and expanding opportunities for our three, four, and five-year-olds. We've got to do that, start them and keep them, because as I look at the data, it continually supports. The longer our children are in Southfield Public Schools when they start and we engage them and their families, the more successful our children will be as we go along. So thank you, Ms. Robinson, to share.
Good evening, board, superintendent, cabinet, administration, and our wonderful families, parents, staff, and guests. I'm Jacqueline Robinson, the PR manager. And I'm going to just be before you just for a little bit to just highlight some of the wonderful programs that we have here in the district. Right now, this very moment, we are in the middle of kindergarten roundup. How many of you have heard of our kindergarten roundup? Okay, so please feel free to go to any of our schools and check out the roundup. I was at Grace last week and I received a wonderful tour from Principal Sharon Lewis. And I saw their cafeteria for the Lower L and it had a view of a forest all around in the front of the cafeteria. And I had never seen that and it was wonderful. And the students and the teachers and enthusiasm is fantastic. And just as Dr. Wood said, our research shows that students who begin their academic careers in, at SPS and kindergarten, they do better on standardized testing. These are students that end up being Gates Millennium Scholars and soaring and doing exceptionally well. So we want to make sure that the community supports kindergarten roundup. Now, speaking of kindergarten, before kindergarten, there is preschool. And we have wonderful preschool programs. We have the Great Start Program. We have Head Start and new, brand-new, hot off the print. College begins at Bussy. This year in September, we are unveiling our new Tuition Day preschool program. And we are really excited about that. This program will be located in Bussy Center and the teachers all have degrees. This is the internationally renowned high school curriculum, which has been tested and proven. It has a track record of success. And our students at Bussy, we have a video, a kindergarten video that you'll see on our website. And our students, the parents, tell us that Bussy really prepares them for kindergarten. And when we go over to the elementary schools and we ask the kindergarten teachers, do they see a difference when students attend Bussy? They tell us definitely they are more prepared for school. So we're excited about this. You'll be hearing more about it in the days to come. And if you know anyone who is interested, please have them to call us or check out our website. Coming up on the 24th is Revolution Read Day. Woo! Now listen, woo! We are excited about this because the children are going to all dress up as their favorite book characters. But even better, the adults are going to dress up as their favorite book characters, even though who don't want to. And we're going to have a good time. From preschool all the way through high school, activities will be going on across the district. Our younger grade K5, I believe, are going to have a celebrity reader to read to them. All of the students will receive compliments of champions, fruit snacks. They'll also get bookmarks. So it's going to be a lot of fun. And we're looking to have for the adults, building and department contests for who is dressed the best. And I am going to win. I definitely want you to know. I've been telling Nicole about my costume, haven't I, Nicole? And then, is this our last one? Finally, Volunteer Day is back. It is April 28th. That is Saturday. And it is in the morning. It's 8 to 12. I think there are some schools that do 9 to 12. And this is a time where the community and the businesses come together and help to keep Southfield beautiful and clean, help beautify our school. Last year, we had a wonderful time. We had many businesses that provided donations and support and staff to make our schools beautiful. So if you're free, April 28th, your neighborhood school will be doing this, so please feel free to check that out. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Dennis Gregory and representatives from Durham Transportation to come to the podium. I've asked for our transportation company to come and to share with our community and most of our board members. We have some concerns, some issues, some lateness, some parties, some things that we would like to have Durham to provide us with some insights and how we will receive some additional support as we move forward in the future. Our children and getting them to and from school is extremely important and they know that and we understand our seriousness. So, please, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wood, and the members of the board, and parents and other visitors here in the audience. My name is Brad Tate and I work for Durham School Services. And I, along with some other members of my team, provide service to the Southfield Public Schools and more importantly, to the students that attend your schools. We were at last week to attend a meeting with Dr. Wood and a couple of other members of her staff. And at that meeting, besides some of the pleasantries and the things that were doing well, it was, we spent time discussing the things where candidly, we were falling behind on our end of the deal. We value our partnership with the Southfield Public Schools and there were areas that were identified that we were falling behind. And if I can group those, though, I would say a number of these items in transportation, it's a very intertwined. Many things impact, whether from weather to equipment to people and personnel. And ironically, those were the items that I think were, that I took away from the meeting, that was made very clear from Dr. Wood. And others that, equipment. Following a harsh winter, we've had a spike in equipment, which unfortunately has affected our ability to provide the service that we need. We don't have enough buses, it's hard to provide the transportation. It causes students to be on buses longer. It causes them to be delayed, which negatively impacts them. I mean, at the end of the day, we recognize them as parents ourselves. It's about the kids and getting them to school late is unacceptable. And I took that away from that meeting. Another item from that meeting was communication. Communication is pretty much paramount in life, communicating to others. Schools deserve and should hear from us when we're running late, for whatever the reason is. As well as when the parents call, you just want to know where your child is. And that's certainly a fair request. And so I took that as a second item to walk away. What we need to revisit with our folks is this is some of the key things we've promised to this school district, like we've promised to all the other districts that we serve. We will communicate and we will fix that and what we've done with our training. And another item was, quite honestly, it ties into the communications customer service. At the end of the day, you guys are our customers. And our customers, you know, from the smallest preschool student all the way to the tallest high school student and to the parent and the school, we need to remember that. I like to, I follow the golden rule. I want to be, treat me as I want to treat you and vice versa. And I think that was a fair request. And I have great concern, and that's where I feel, you know, standing before you all, just a little disappointed that we dropped the bond, because that's one of the things I thought we did very well. And that's certainly one of those items that we will, it will be resolved regardless. And finally, just the on-time, every-day, you know, providing the service to allow students to get to and from school safely. My boss, Mike Settle, was at the meeting. He asked me to convey his, you know, thanks for the opportunity, but as well as also our commitment from the top of our company all the way down, that we will get back on track and we will fulfill what we're obligated to do. I mean, the biggest disappointment I took away from that meeting is many times we had the opportunity. One of the things you get when you contract with a Durham is we have resources, 30,000 employees, resources all in greater Detroit suburb area. And simply raise our hand, we could remedy a lot of these problems. And that's one of the things with John and his staff that we revisited, is, you know, don't suffer alone. There's things that come up and life happens. We need to raise our hand and get back to the commitment we've made to you and to board, to the students, and the parents. That's where we stand.
Thank you. Safety and making sure that our kids get to school on time, because lateness is impacting their learning. And again, what was reiterated was the customer service and the care and communicating. And so we're going to work together. Board members, are there any questions or comments that you would like to add?
I have to add a comment. I just want to thank you for coming. It takes a lot of courage to come forth and to admit faults. And so I certainly appreciate that, especially being a parent with a young child in the district. Safety, grades, academics, very important. So I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
You guys have an app where the folks can tell you where the buses are and maybe it's a smart. How close are you guys to?
And the app is called Where's My Bus? I know there's a number, there's a couple others that are out there on the markets. But what it is, is simply through a smartphone, just like the name suggests, Where's My Bus? It would allow parents to go in. And you know, there's certainly got to be safety parameters. I mean, you won't be able to just willy-nilly find where any student is, you know, your student, where is he or she? To answer your question, where we are, we are, that's in a, we've got that in a pilot program currently right in the Michigan area. We have it in Northville. And to the last count, there were some initial bumps because there's some portal challenges in getting communication as well as getting the district information to sync up with this. I believe we're to the point where Northville is far enough along that we will start looking to the second phase. And I know that was one of the items that was brought up as well, leading with Southfield being a candidate for that. Pretty much, I think it could. I mean, it's a great app and it's wireless. Because at the end of the day, you just want to know where your kid is. I mean, it's very simple, what we do. And you know, whether you recall it is, is not about anything but, you know, my student. I think that's a very admirable and I think it's the right thing.
I just have a question. Have you instituted a training program of curating the people to answer the phone and communicate with our parents? Is something, have you done that?
We have. I mean, there's different programs. One of them that we've gone through is a stat is called Phone Doctor. And it speaks just to that, when folks come, how you portray yourself over the phone. I mean, you can make a lot of communication, a lot of inferences, and I've never seen you. That is one, and I know next, on the 18th, we are going to revisit our customer service training with our folks. And just, again, get back to the basics. It's not hard. People are calling. I know you're having a busy day. We just got to remind ourselves. They're upset because they want to know where their child is. And they don't need to, they don't want to hear all the other problems of the day or what you're... And that's, and I think that's what I heard from this meeting, is some of that's coming through that phone. Even if I don't mean to do that, you're hearing that I'm having a bad day or I don't like John or whatever it is. And that's not what we're here to do.
Okay. Oh, a little later, you will definitely. Thank you for your, thank you so much, Brad. And we will most definitely be in touch with you shortly. And I thank the whole team.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes my report. And I'm going to turn it now over to, um, Nicole.
Good evening. Mr. Ryan Bellwes and Mr. Prescott will give the board presentation, an overview on E-Rate, which is the telecommunications disco. I'm not going to steal their thunder. So one of the action items today goes to a bit of work connected to that. So with that...
Good evening. Ryan Bellwes, Director of Technology. And here, I'm going to connect two items that we'll be talking about in the next couple of minutes. That is E-Rate. And then also with the E-Rate program is a firewall upgrade that is tied to that. So we're going to quickly go through what the E-Rate program is and give you a little history so you know what we're talking about. So the E-Rate program has been around a number of years. It was created by federal government in 1996, implemented in 1997. And it provides resources to the school district to fund telecommunications. So within E-Rate, there's two kind of categories of services. There's category one and category two, or priority one and priority two. Because E-Rate is in a flux of change. It recently went through a reauthorization where the federal government said that instead of paying for these legacy telephones, like post lines, those are the lines that are, that we used to have in our houses. Everybody had a telephone line in their house. Instead of paying for those services for schools which aren't benefiting the children and the educational in the classroom, we're going to move the program towards paying for broadband internet access, so high-speed access into the classrooms. So as I talk about those two categories, the first category is really the telecommunications services. The second category is the access and high-speed capabilities within the school district. So with those two categories in mind, I want to walk through a little, a quick document that kind of sums it up for you in terms of, this is what Southfield currently gains from the E-Rate program. So this is, this goes through the services that we get from E-Rate programming. So we have our website, our district website. That's considered internet access. We've got Verizon, which is the district cell phones. Windstream, which is the district telecommunications services. So all the classroom phones go through, through circuits provided by Windstream. And long-distance services. And so those services are listed in the service provider category on the screen. And when I said that E-Rate is in a state of flux, they're going through and they're putting more money, committing more money towards the high-speed access in the classrooms. They're taking away the funding for these kind of priority-one services. So they're reducing the amount that Southfield receives by 20% every year. So as you can see under the, where it says estimated E-Rate reimbursement amount, that is a declining amount every year. So, you know, some might say, well, that's a bad thing. But we're becoming less and less dependent on those services. And when we reauthorized it, we reauthorized, or the federal government reauthorized it into category two. And so what they did with category two is they said, we're going to give every student in Southfield, based on student count, $150. So that will generate just over $1 million in available funds over the next five years to put in, to making sure that we can sustain these high-speed access as we move into technologies like BYOD initiatives and one-to-one initiatives. So we'll have the capacity to maintain those networks, our networks here in Southfield. So that's kind of a little historical picture of the E-Rate program and the amount of revenue that really E-Rate allows us to take advantage of. Now, as we move into the firewall project, the firewall is, you know, a definition of a firewall. A firewall is a system to prevent unauthorized access to the Southfield network. So the Southfield firewall that's currently in place is at capacity. So over the last couple of months, we've had some, we've had to limit the amount of traffic going through the firewall because it is at capacity. And last year during our budget review process, we planned for the upgrade, knowing that it was near its capacity or in a useful life. But what we've been able to do is, last year we did that planning, it was going to be a general fund expenditure and it was going to be taken out of the technology budget. But since the reauthorization of E-Rate and the firewall clause underneath that category of E-Rate, we married the two projects together. So we, Southfield needs a new firewall. The E-Rate program has been reauthorized. We can utilize the E-Rate program to get funding for that. So what we're asking for, we went through over the last two months, the process of applying for E-Rate, soliciting bids, public bids for a new firewall. Yesterday, we opened up the bid. We received three bids. And we put out a spec for that, what the requirements are for the new firewall. And we received three bids. And our recommendation to the board tonight is to go with the, essentially the low bid from Delta Networks for a cost not to exceed $56,458.08. Now, you might ask me, why is there such a spread in the price? We put out a certain spec of firewall. And under the E-Rate program, there are certain guidelines on what you have to look at. You have to set the bid to a certain lay. And this bid called for a particular checkpoint solution. That's just a brand of firewall. Well, Delta Networks took that spec and they came up with a competitor product, Fortinet, that is equivalent. So that was their bid. So that's why there is that price spread. So the thing that they bid was an equivalent item to the checkpoint solution that we put out. And what did that do? Because we have to follow certain guidelines, we saved the district over $55,000 by soliciting public bids and looking at the market and what does, what can the market offer Southfield Public Schools. So the recommendation is to authorize the Southfield administration to pursue this, a contract with Delta Networks. And following the E-Rate guideline, the purchase would actually happen, is allowed to happen after July 1st. We would go ahead and make that purchase and wait for the E-Rate funding to come back to the district. There's a very good likelihood, because E-Rate is based upon a free and reduced lunch count. So Southfield is at the 80% level. So most projects at the 80% level get funded. And we're especially believe it will be funded because the reauthorization is pumping so much more money this year into those category two for services like firewall. Because a lot of districts, just like Southfield, need to, you know, maintain those capacity to handle all the online learning that's going on. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Are you familiar with Delta's work?
Uh, yeah.
And are you sure that they are capable of handling continental services in the district?
Certainly. Delta Networks is a local partner. They are located in West Bloomfield. They have a team of 20-plus individuals. I have worked on them at my role. I maintain relationships with districts in the area. So I have personally done a lot of business, whole district upgrades. Last year in Southfield, we did a network upgrade. We went with Cisco over in neighboring district. We went with Delta Networks. They sell Extreme gear. They actually have a, they pride themselves on their customer service, on their documentation. So I was actually very excited to see that Delta provided a bid that we could take advantage of because I know the president of the company personally. You know, we have a relationship because we're in the IT world. They're a valid partner in the world. So I have no question. Their people, in doing the reference checks over the last 24 hours, they provided us with the certifications on the piece of equipment. So they have three staff on-site, very close to here, up on telegraph, that are certified in the product that we'll be purchasing. Thank you.
Any more questions for?
Thank you.
One comment, actually, action items. Report number 53 was established, attributes were coming out to see that the recommendation was for a firewall hardware not to exceed $100,000. That amount would actually be for 56,458.08, you see that? Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bellwes.
Good evening, board members. I have three sections in my report this evening, two of which will be delivered by members of the staff here in the district. First will be Janet Hill, who is the Director of the Lutheus Station Center. She's going to speak about the upcoming Head Start application that they do this month for the United States government. So, Ms. Hill.
Good evening, Superintendent, board members, cabinet, and community and staff at Southfield Public Schools. We are going to propose to reduce our enrollment by probably 53, let me make sure I have my numbers correct, by 50, by 30, actually 32. And we're looking at going from serving 190 children to 158. And the reason why we're doing that is because Michigan is a state that requires families that are receiving TANIS benefits, temporary assistance for needy families, to attend school and work. And we have a lot of three-year-old families, children, families that have children that are three-years-old that do not qualify for full day. Because our Head Start and our Great Start funding provide full-day services. And it says that Great Start says you must be four-years-old. So as a result of that, we looked at our focus groups from our families as well as our goals, long-term goals that we wrote for our 2013 and 14 grant. And we said that we wanted to ensure that we provide comprehensive services that will meet the needs of our community. Our families need full-day services. And so this is why we would like to bring this, of course, to the board and policy council and then present it to our Head Starts because it's a need. And I just want to share some data with you that I was able to pull. We have actually 14 children on our waiting list that are three-years-old and all of them are receiving TANIS benefits. We have six teenage parents that are in our program that have children that are three-years-old. And we have 11 grandparents that are raising their grandchildren. And so it's a big need because it's easy for them to be able to bring their children to school. The children receive a full day of services. And then they're able to go to school. They're either able to go to work. And they don't have to try to scramble and find someone to pick up their child. And some of our families cannot afford before and after care. And so as a result, we're looking at trying to provide full-day funding for our three-year-old children. That would reduce our enrollment by 17%. And the office of Head Start does not have a problem as long as you're not at that 20% threshold. Are there any questions?
Well, your reduction amount, that includes the student that Jackie mentioned earlier, below kindergarten, kindergarten, in your account. She mentioned that, it's tuition base.
It's tuition base.
It's separate.
Separate.
Excuse me. And what age do you represent, the tuition base?
The tuition base will be three and four-year-olds.
Not two-year-olds.
Not two-year-olds.
I've got a two-year-old.
My question is, to accommodate the full-day need, has there been consideration for working with the tuition base and the DHS for the CDC grant for some of those families that are already receiving some of the state funding, maybe they were qualified for the DHS?
That has been something that we really haven't necessarily had a conversation about in collaboration with the tuition base. Because we're looking at our tuition base to be our families that are on our waiting list that are over income. They're over that 100% poverty level. And some of them are even over 350%. So they would not qualify anyway for Head Start or Great Start.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. And the second report will be done by Angela Ferrier, who is actually the principal at Stevenson Elementary. She's going to be reporting to us, to the board, and her for annual report for Stevenson as a focus school. So, Ferrier?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, school board, Dr. Wood, cabinet, and our community and staff. Nice to see some friendly students and faces in the audience. I'm here to present our quarterly school board report from Adelaide Stevenson Elementary School because this year Stevenson was designated as a focused school. However, Stevenson has always had historically high test scores, very supportive community, neighborhood school. In 2013, our MEAT test scores came back excellent. Our Stevenson students met and exceeded our annual measurable objectives in all subjects except science. So we were celebrating. However, a further analysis and a focused school designation in August revealed that there was a two-wide achievement gap between those very high-scale scores at the top and the bottom, especially in mathematics. We had already begun work on improving our instructional strategies in math before that focused designation. So I just have a couple little slides to show some of the work that the staff had done. We did quite an extensive line item analysis of the 2012 MEAT test and looked at some strengths and some challenges as we looked at the questions on the assessment. And we came up with some patterns of weaknesses, estimation, measurement, geometry, and fractions. So those are some things that we knew that we needed to look at and we needed to determine why and what we need to do to address those weaknesses. Southfield School District helped a lot with that because administrators and teacher leaders began training on the data-wise cycle with Oakland Schools. And that's basically further training with how to look at your data and analyze it and determine where to go from there. So another piece of that is bringing in an instructional rounds team. And in last year, around this time, we hosted an instructional rounds visit with support from Oakland Schools to get feedback on our math instruction. And they visited all of our teachers' classrooms in K-5. And they gave us some great feedback. As a result of that, they worked with me and helped me develop professional development. So this fall, Oakland Schools came in and helped work with our staff. It's called Math Talk Moves. And that's basically really increasing discourse and inquiry, those things that the fifth graders expelled at with Dr. Wood. And they probably were showing her some of the things they've learned with that. So they really come in and really showed us some things that we can do to improve instruction in terms of getting students to talk about what they know and expand their learning through that. Polly Suzinski has also been instrumental from district support. She has given us a lot of help and professional development on using our math test data and analyzing that. And Keisha Hill, our Southfield Public Schools math consultant, has come over quite a few times to facilitate staff professional development as well in the area of mathematics. So to address our achievement gaps, the bottom 30% of each class was identified using those MEAT scale scores from 2013. And because that would just be your grades four and five, we had to look at other data to determine who our bottom 30% is in grades one to three. So we looked at our math scores and our DRA, which is the developmental reading assessment, to determine reading levels and look at the students that we really wanted to target with small group intervention lessons. So our plan of attack, our teachers meet with small groups three times a week, and that is minimal. I think there are several teachers that are doing every day. And they're delivering specific skills, inter- And they're delivering, uh, specific skill intervention lessons in English Language Arts, reading, and math. They're giving pre-tests before that specific skill lesson, and then they're taking post-tests, and that data is collected and analyzed for each classroom and student. Our data teams meet as grade-level teams. Um, Polly, again, Suzinski, and Keisha have come over and met with us. And, uh, we're really looking at that data, and they're planning together to create those intervention plans. We're also using Title I support, um, with our pull-out small groups and our literacy coach to provide additional interventions in reading and math. And currently, we're using Title I support to fund active school tutoring for those bottom thirty percent students, um, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, here's some data that I would like to show the Board, which reflects what we know so far and the growth that we're seeing so far as the fruit of our efforts. Grades K-two did winter testing in January, and this is a quick snapshot of mathematics to show the, um, mean of growth. The diamond there shows the projected, where they, the, the average projected growth, where you at least want to hit your target. And you can see that in grades one and two, both classes, um, especially in second grade, went well over that projected growth and, um, showed some excellent growth in mathematics. Now, our third, fourth, and fifth graders just testing right now. So, I was able to do a snapshot of one fifth-grade class that took their math map test literally yesterday. So, we had to really look at their data. So, I'm not able to share all of third, fourth, and fifth grade which, yet. However, I wanted to show some significant growth, and again, something to celebrate. So, what this table shows are five students in the bottom thirty percent in one fifth-grade class. So, we have student one, student two, student three, student four, and student five. Now, student four was absent on the day of their testing yesterday, and she will have to make that up, so we will be doing that. So, that's why there's not a, um, second bar there. But this is the, um, projected growth. They should have grown at least eight points, and you can see that most of the students in this group almost doubled that projection and are showing significant growth. Thank you for applauding. And I, I have to say, our teachers and our students have worked so hard, and I'm just so proud, because I know that we're going to continue to see these wonderful results and this growth, because it, it really has done a very targeted endeavor. But at the same time, the instructional strategies that, um, we are learning and incorporating are deepening that understanding for all students in all subjects. So, we're really seeing a lot of amazing things at Stevenson. And I always thank you for your support.
Thank you.
What, what other questions that you have? Okay. Thank you, Angela Ferrier.
So, the last report, um, that I will give this evening is just, we're attending the department, and you heard from the ladies from the four high schools that we have just finished the A P T, um, last week. Polly Suzinski, who's our supervisor of testing and assessment, is completing, completing a series of meetings over the next few weeks, um, to discuss the M-Step, which is the new iteration of the MEET, uh, that will occur, um, in our district this April and May. And so, as you see on the screen, grades five and eight, um, at all schools that have those configurations, will be testing between April thirteenth and May first. Grades four and seven, uh, will be testing between April twenty-seventh and May fifteenth. Grades three and six will be testing between May eighteenth and June, June fifth. And our eleventh grade students will be testing early, because they also have A P exams to prepare for in May, um, and other exams, and so they will be testing April twenty-eighth to May first. And so, that is the remainder of our testing schedule for this year, and, uh, we're, we're confident and hopeful that our students will show what they know and make, and make fit for those exams. So, that is my report this evening.
Thank you.
When we have fair dice tests, such as the M-Step, just as an example, um, this might be a very elementary question, but who pays for that? Is, does the state of Michigan put the bill, well, not say the state, really us as taxpayers, but do they put the bill, or do they send out the bill?
With the state exam, they put the bill, uh, for our, um, the other ancillary tests that we have, we put the bill.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, uh, my report tonight is contained within the consent agenda and the Action Item. And I believe that, um, takes us to our Head Start report, and, um, please, please, please forgive me that when we opened this meeting, um, we have a board member absent, and I forgot to mention that trustee and President Grant Williams is excused in his absence tonight, and, uh, we're off the air from this. And with that, I'll start the Head Start report.
I'd like to just start really, um, on curriculum, and I will make this, uh, an electronic copy to provide for everyone, and then we could look at it in more depth on the seventeenth. Um, but this is just regarding the comparison summary data for high school child observation record or the core. And, uh, Ms. Hill really wants me to highlight this, mainly because the federal government needs to know that we share this information with the community. And so, BUSTY's Early Childhood Program implements a curriculum based on the nationally-recognized high schools. You heard that earlier. These standards are founded on developmentally appropriate skills that lead to success in school. The curriculum is designed to prepare children for the Southfield Public Schools kindergarten curriculum. Um, I'm just going to highlight two or three of them. Um, one of the categories, say, for example, is social-emotional development, which is very important. Teachers and principals in the room probably would agree. Um, and they went from three point two-five as a score, compiled score, in November of last year, to a three point eight-four in February of this year. So, that's roughly sixty, uh, points in, in progress, towards progress. Um, mathematics knowledge and skill, forty points improved. Science knowledge and skill, sixty points improved. And then, under the domains, where we talk about physical development and health, all of those various domains, they actually group them, uh, female and male, and it was interesting to know that scores indicated that female students scored slightly higher in four out of the five essential domains. So, um, rock on, women, right? Just want to share that. Then, um, Ms. Hill, I almost wanted to just pass her report to her for her to report, but it's okay. She worked hard today. She can go home and have some dinner. Um, the directed report for this month, March ninth, two thousand fifteen, enrollment at Head Start is a hundred and ninety students. Great Start is seventy students. There have been thirty dropped, and there are eighty-three students on our waitlist. The Child Adult Children Food Care Program, breakfast served, one thousand two hundred fifty-two, lunch, one thousand four hundred ninety-five, and snacks, one hundred, one thousand two hundred fifty. There are nineteen children with disabilities. The program information report, there have been some significant changes, um, we reported this out last month, that made to the report that requires programs to modify the way they collect data. Um, Head Start is celebrating fifty years of community service this year. Measles and immunizations, um, correspondence came through, obviously with the things we've been hearing in the news with regards to measles and immunizations. Um, of course, the Office of Head Start has decided that it is critical that children in the program are vaccinated according to the CDC and prevention. Families will no longer be able to provide a waiver for immunizations unless they attend a special class from the Oakland County Health Department. Um, the final rule on the Head Start eligibility is that it has been published in the Federal Registry, and it modifies statutory eligibility requirements. There are changes in accepting homeless children. Any child or family living in a home with another person is considered homeless, and Head Start programs may ask for families to provide documentation as such. So, enrollment can be done through an interview via the phone if the family is unable to physically come to the program site. Programs will have the ERSE review. These rules will apply in the next program year. The sub-assessment we reported out last month is complete. Corrective actions have been put into place. Um, our Head Start application is due on April first, which is why we're having that really important study session on the seventeenth with the governing board, and plans are to present that to the Policy Council the week of March twenty-third. BUSTY is requesting to modify our enrollment. Um, Ms. Hill just reported on that. I won't repeat it. BUSTY has formed a new partnership with B Dentist Choice. They will be participating in our upcoming health enrollment fairs, providing us with two bicycles to raffle off during the fair, and providing free dental screenings and cleanings for five staff members. End time hours are still being adjusted, um, to reflect hours in Head Start separate from Great Start. BUSTY has been asked to participate in Supporting School Readiness and Success of the Young African-American Male. This will be held in Detroit, um, on March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and is sponsored by Region Five of the Head Start Institute. Um, Ms. Joyce Forrest, a Policy Council Vice Chair, and five staff members will be attending Head Start's National Conference, um, March thirty-first to April second. And the internal review team will be visiting BUSTY on March twenty-fifth as a part of the district's oral accreditation. And then, there's a couple of upcoming events, of course, March's National Reading Month, and they are dropping everything in reading at ten a.m. and two p.m. Family Engagement Training starts March eleventh and twenty-fifth. Please contact the office for more information. Um, April is the month of the young child, so there will be purple ribbons will be passed out to our families to display. And April twenty-third is the Enrollment and Recruitment Fair. Likewise, these documents I will make sure you have, um, just reporting out our, our budget and how much we, we received and how much we spent of the federal. We've spent fifty point two percent, or six hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars, leaving forty-nine point eight percent remaining. And with local match in the end time, we have total to date, two hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred and nineteen thousand, and that leaves a percentage remaining of thirty-one percent, um, for us to, um, get to, as far as volunteers and the local end time. And finally, the note, there are no charge payments in February of this year. Open purchase orders are not included in the information provided a moment ago. Um, so, for program operations, the purchase orders were eight thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. And that concludes this portion of the BUSTY report with more to come on March seventeenth. All right. Take off that hat, and, um, we are moving on to our Action Items, board members.
All right. If, um, if I could have someone to open, make a motion to open and approve the consent agenda?
I move that we open the consent agenda. Support.
Okay. Then, open and, uh, supported. Any discussion or comments, questions? If none, we can, um, if the Senate will call for the vote, vote off for the vote.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Myself.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And... Thank you. Uh, report number fifty-three fifty, the approval of the firewall upgrade, representing goal number seven. Would someone please open, make a motion to open that?
I move that we open report number fifty-three forty-nine.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty-three fifty. Support.
All right. Um, we just had a presentation. Were there any follow-up questions?
I can just have one question.
Yes.
And forgive me if I have a question that may suck. The upgrade, um, my question is, when will that have to be upgraded again?
Certainly. So, uh, the capacity that we've built in, we've, we've kind of, uh, future-proofed, uh, the upgrade, so I would anticipate not having to upgrade that within five, a five-year period. We have substantial capacity in the available upgrade, uh, if we, when we purchase this device, so, uh, we know in the, the industry, IT industry, is changing rapidly, uh, but looking at growth chart, where, how much bandwidth we're using today, bandwidth is, I would think of it as like water flowing through a pipe, uh, and so, today, we're squeezed with the current firewall, and so, we're going to expand that pipe greatly, uh, so, you know, we do, we do some stretches on, on growth, uh, so we should be good for a number, number of years.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, just as a clarification to my wonderful report, please, do we, we just acted on the consent agenda? That contained both the minutes and the personnel report, correct? So, will clarification needed? Thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, if you would call for the roll, the vote.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
All right. Thank you. Next is report number fifty-three fifty-one, the approval of extension of professional services for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, and likewise, four seven. Would someone please make a motion to open that report?
I move that we open report fifty-three fifty-one.
We've had a chance to review this. Do you have any questions or comments?
No.
All right. Having now, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Okay. Uh, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson, yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes. All right. Report fifty-three fifty-two is the recommendations for student reinstatement. If I could, um, have someone open that report?
I move it.
All right. Um, Madam Secretary, would you please call for the vote?
Okay. Um, Trustee Smith? Trustee Smith?
Maybe I should back up. You recall, just two weeks ago, we had a reinstatement hearing, myself and Trustee Robinson sat in on that.
Okay.
I move that we table this for the session.
In what sec? Yeah, I think we already have a motion, so...
You have a motion.
Yeah, we have to vote, and that's, the motion's been approved. We have to vote. You don't have to vote if you want to.
Yes.
Abstain. Abstain, okay. All right. Uh, Trustee Robinson, yes?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Five, four, one, abstain.
Thank you. That takes us on to the information item. These items do not require board action. Would, um, Trustee Lewis, would you mind reading the, this is the district, uh, which is report fifty-three fifty-three?
I'll now read the report, number fifty-three, for the district. The following donation was provided to Southfield Public Schools. Number one, Ms. Good, Ms. Craig, and Kathleen Capos donated books to the, to the James I. Smith Library, Media Center, at Southfield Lake High School during February two thousand and fifteen. These donated items are valued at one hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Details of each item are provided on the attached list. Second, the seventy more donated five hundred dollars to University High School Academy. These funds will be utilized to support our community.
Thank you. Additional information items are there for your crew to go at your leisure, um, because these items do not require board action, and, um, also in seventh seed, which is the bill summary, and, um, pay close attention to the community to the expenditures and various, um, number data that we, we pay every month to keep this district going, so we appreciate, um, all of those things. So, those are found at the back of your agenda. That brings us to one of our most favorite times of the meeting, which is our public participation. The Board has adopted an amended policy on public participation. Only those persons with concerns related to school matters may participate during the public participation portion of a meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board will listen to comments, but may not respond during the meeting. The Board will listen to comments, but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of that school's principal or other administrator before coming to the Board. Your cooperation is very much appreciated. Mr. Troy Scott, and I think I shouldn't say something about name, and if you'd come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Troy Scott. My address is 17500 West 11 Mile Road, Lake Village, 48313.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. As stated, my name is Troy Scott. I am the MEA Uniserve Director, representing the Education Association, Education Secretaries, and Support Personnel Association within the district. I'm very well aware that by now you know about the vote of no confidence with regard to your Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations, and Director of Legal and Labor Affairs. What you are not aware of, however, is the fact that over 600 MEA-represented employees took part in the vote of no confidence. When the votes were tallied, 96% of those voting indicated they had no confidence in the performance and capabilities of the individuals for whom the vote was held. That is extremely troubling, and I believe this Board of Education should find it just as troubling. I can take the remainder of my time and provide you with a litany of reasons why the vote came back the way it did, such as the fact that the original budget and the audit has deferred by as much as $18 million over the past four years. And that's according to documents condemned by this district of the state of Michigan, that we waited five months for correct seniority lists, and that harassment complaints have gone uninvestigated and unanswered for over one year. What I think is more important tonight, however, is to tell you that I should not be here this evening. And quite frankly, a vote of no confidence should have never had to be taken. There was, however, no choice. The reason is, our concerns fell upon deaf ears. And the individual, the employees and the representatives we deal with on a daily basis have no interest in a labor-management relationship. It does not exist in the Southfield Public Schools. In a labor-management relationship, both sides commit to working with one another. They commit to transparency. They commit to sharing information. They commit to compromise, and both sides to commit to open and honest communications and to long-term problem-solving methods and solutions to ensure quality education for students. These employees that you see here and in the district that voted, provided concessions, took massive layoffs, and were prioritized. I've seen numerous statements by this Board that they stepped up to the plate when it was necessary. I am openly asking this Board this evening, what kind of relationship do you want to have with your employees and their representatives? Do you want a relationship built on commitment, cooperation, trust, and understanding? We do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Mr. Michael Graves?
Good evening. To the Board and to the staff and the community, and most importantly, the students of Southfield. My name is Michael Graves. I reside at 28429 Stewart, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I have been a resident of this district since 1990. I have vested, I have invested into this district. I have invested my time, my expertise, and the quality of work that I provide to not only the students in Southfield, but working along with the staff in Southfield. I have also had four sons, who have all graduated from this school this year, I'm proud to say. And currently, right now, I have two grandchildren who are attending Vannett Park. But most importantly, I and the people that I represent, I am the president of Southfield Public Schools. We don't feel bad. Over the last five years, there has been some concessions made, and our group stepped up to the plate, as was mentioned, and made those concessions. Was made assured at the time that we made those concessions, that when times got better, those concessions would come back to you. As of today, none of those has happened. The members I represent are paraprofessionals. Maybe, in 2008, you know, we went through a situation where there was productization. I'm just asking that the district show that they do value the members that I represent. Just in short, there's been contracts given to companies, to other particular groups, but not to MESSPO. MESSPO is the group that has not had a contract for over two years. And we, at the time, we sat there and looked at the finances, and we were sure that if the finances were better, that we would treat you better. But we know to this day that hasn't, that has not happened. So all I'm saying to you is, there's a song that I sung to my wife when I first met her. I know this one sounds kind of weird, but it was, "All I want for Christmas is my girl." And all I want right now is a contract.
Is there a Lori Tunic?
Good evening, Lori Tunic, 28730 Bella Vista Drive. I am the president of Southfield Education Association and a proud graduate of Southfield Public Schools. Teachers plant the seeds of I-10. Teachers are dedicated, patient, and often never, and offer never-ending encouragement. Teachers watch our students soar and then demand even more. In 2010-11, the district came to all of the bargaining units and told us the district was financially vulnerable. To prevent the district from going into deficit, we bargained concessions. 2.5% in concessions right off of our base salary, and up to 4% more in concessions in other languages bargained away. Our internal comparables also took similar cuts. We had a gentleman's agreement at the time, that when the district was financially recovered and reached stability, we would get back what we once gave away. Unfortunately, the district is not willing to keep up its under the bargain. Over the past five years, we have lost over 160 teachers. The average high school English teacher now has 30 additional students to serve on a daily basis. We have gone from kindergarten classes of 24 with paraprofessionals to classes of 27 without an additional pair of eyes or hands. We have also gone from 179 work day a year to 186 days. What other job are you expected to do more and get paid less? This past October, Plammeran publicly stated that Southfield Public Schools was financially stable. In fact, they told you that you have one of the highest, if not the highest, fund equity of 21% in Oakwood County. Yet, at the bargaining table, all we hear is, "We are broke." You tell us you want to make us whole, yet when we put an offer on the table to make us whole, you deny us the opportunity. It does not escape us, nor do we find it humorous, that the only people who have settled wages for this year are the highest-paid individuals in the district. In fact, cabinet members have not only recovered the 2% cut they took in 910, but have exceeded this by an additional 3% in wage increases. It also does not escape us that there are new positions being added to cabinet to end staffing at JWE. Why is it that the district has money to build capacity so far away from students, but is not willing to give to those of us on the front lines? This is inequity at its finest. It's March already. Show us you value us. We have tried to play fair. We have carried out, we have carried the financial burden for this district. We are no longer on the same page. In fact, we're in different books, and it's enough already. Today, I publicly submit to you a demand to bargain financial encounters for the 1516 school year right away. We are dedicated professionals, giving every child every chance, and we ask that we are treated as nothing less than professional.
Is it Danielle Adams? Thank you. If you will come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Danielle Adams, and I reside at 29180 Leemore Drive here in Southfield. And I have two students in the Southfield District, and I am here in regards to the Durham bus system. I understand that there are many issues with the bus system. However, there was a particular issue with my six-year-old daughter this past week, which resulted in a new driver stating that she was not properly trained, and my daughter was told to get off of the bus at a stop where there was no parent or guardian there to pick her up. And she then walked through the neighborhood, passed three intersections, home to find no one there. So my six-year-old daughter was left outside in the cold crying for her mommy because the bus driver decided that she should get off because this was her stop. So I would like for the Board, the staff, to really address the problems with this bus system and get it in order, because our students are late to class, the teachers are complaining, and I was encouraged from numerous teachers to come here and speak as a voice of a parent, and to enlighten you of my situation, and hope that action will be taken sooner than later. And this past year has been the worst. And I have three students that have went through the system, and by far, this year is the worst, and instead of getting better, the services are getting worse. So I just ask that appropriate training goes to the driver, and that you hire compassionate drivers, because what driver will put a six-year-old off the bus with no one there to pick her up? That... I want to address immediately and solve the sort of action taken on behalf of the students and the parents and the staff who want to get their day started with. Students are already around, so thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Phillips Young, Agent Phillips Young?
Good evening. My name is Agent Phillips Young. I am a parent on the address, 21410 Evergreen Road, Southfield, Michigan. I am a parent at Brakes Literally. I am also on the PTSA, our new PTSA. I am the vice president. I really want to thank the Board and Dr. Wood for having Durham come in and speak to us. We had a meeting earlier in the year with Durham, and they made a lot of promises that they did not keep. So it appears that they're putting Band-Aids on some issues and dropping the ball on the real issues, and it's not gotten any better. I don't know what it all, the contract entails, but the teachers are frustrated. They don't want their lessons interrupted. The children, like mine, are upset because they can't get to buses or class on time. I'm a parent. I'm frustrated. Parents need the transportation. They have to go to work. They may not have transportation. And Durham is not doing a good job. I was told we were privatized at one time. I don't know about the privatization, but I know we need a new bus service. We had parents, teachers, and students. They talked about how nasty the buses were. They had roaches on the bus. They talked about the attitude of the driver. It was many, many, many things discussed, but none of it has seemed to come to life. I look forward to the changes that they've made a promise to again. But if not, I think we need a new bus service, and that is all I have to say on behalf of Brakes Literally.
Thank you very much. Ann and Alexa? Sam? Hello? Alex and Ann? Oh, call her name on the end, because they're back in the room. Mr. Lee Bryant?
My name is Story Bryant. I live at 20150 Harbor Lane, Southfield. I am the Southfield Area Council PTA President, and I wanted to thank, come here tonight to thank everyone for your support at the Founder's Day event that we had at St. John's Dominion Banquet Hall, February 2nd on that snow day. We had 180 in attendance, and it was a very, very nice evening, but I just hope, I'm here to come and say thank you for attending, and hope you guys had a great evening, and hope you enjoyed your dinner. And I guess the most part, just thank you for your support with all our local PTAs. Thank you.
Is there a Ms. Fern Katz?
Good evening, my name is Fern Katz of 27065 Fairfax. I was honored to be asked to be the speaker at the induction of the National Honor Society this year at Southfield High School. And I wish to report to you that the number of inductees this year was 35, of which a third were boys, and both of these are records for Southfield High School. And this is due to the effort of the staff, the parents, and the administration to improve the quality of education in this school. We are a team. I want you to remember that. I want you all to remember that. And we are a team that is working. And all of this is in spite of the fact, and I'm sorry to say, that we have a reduced enrollment, and we have a lot of students coming in in the ninth grade who need remedial work. So I'm proud of you. I'm proud of our kids, and let's go get them.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. And last call for Ann or Ann Alexa. All right. That leaves us to board matters. I'm gonna just start on the opposite end with Ms. Trustee Smith.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, trustees, administrations, teachers, students, and the community. And welcome to March. I am particularly excited about the month of March for two reasons, National Reading Month and National Women's History Month. However, before sharing my love for the two, I would like to take a moment to recap how I supported the district's strategic plan during the month of February. In keeping alignment with strategic goal eight, leadership development, on February 13th, I spent the day in Lansing for the new board member introduction, learning about legislation, litigation, and school finance. My goal in attending such training is to learn how to effectively advocate for public education, and I'm pleased to share that I left that day with some specific focuses on how to accomplish that goal. In addition, I took time during winter break to take an additional board training course for maintaining the district's honor board status. Being the newest of the trustees, it's important that I share that I value the importance of keeping the Southfield Board of Education a highly regarded and recognized force. Now for the excitement of this month. In honor of Reading Month, I would like to take a moment to promote reading with and to our children. According to PBSKids.org, "Reading is essential for a child's success." Also often, the barriers faced by children with difficulty reading outweigh their desire to read, and without proper guidance, they never overcome. When a child's reading disability is identified early, that child is more likely to learn strategies that will raise his... strategies that will raise his or her reading to that grade level. So, this makes it even more important to keep reading to our children even when they lack the desire and struggle with difficulty. And to put some action, my advocacy, I'm leading the McIntyre PCO Family Reading Night at my daughter's school on March 25th. The families will enjoy an evening of experiencing the book through family-engaging activities, and I am particularly excited about that. Trustees and administration, you are very welcome, certainly welcome to attend. And on March 26th, my preschoolers and in my preschool classrooms in the district that I am employed with will be spraying me with silly strings as a reward for their diligent reading through the month. So, I'll be wearing a shower cap to work on that day because of my birthday. And also, last month, I shared my love for the celebrity readings program, the celebrity readers program that we have here in the district, and so I did so last month, and I will do again. Encourage you, if you have an hour, to please do share in that moment, because Dr. Wood expressed her joy for having done so, and it really is a joyful experience to be able to do that. And the information can be found on the website if you're interested in signing up to the district's website. So, now for Women's History Month. Allow me to begin by stating, no offense to the men, but March is a wonderful month to be a woman, as we celebrate Women's History Month. I tell people all the time, I believe that we were made to be the heart of our society. We are leaders, caregivers, educators, mothers, sisters, friends, and so much more. The full history of this country could not be told if not for the contributions of women such as Mike Angelo, who used her gift of words and wisdom to heal and encourage health love, and Davy Bates, who fought for civil rights and used her love of journalism to help fight and end segregation in Little Rock, Arkansas, and so many others who impacted so many other areas of this nation on so many levels, which to me is the beauty of our contribution as women, because they are never-ending and continue even to the day. For this reason, the National Congress of Black Women, Oakland County, and I'm wearing a banner in support of my organization, being a member of the organization, will be recognizing local leaders for their contributions to our community. And I'm pleased to share that this year, our very own Dr. Linda Wood will be recognized for her contributions to education and advocacy of children. Dr. Wood, along with other community leaders, will be recognized on Friday, March 4th, at the Bergs, here in Southfield on Bergs Road, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There is no cost, and all are welcome to attend.
Is it March 4th?
March 26th. Did I say 4th? My apologies, March 26th. Congratulations, Dr. Wood.
Thank you.
And to all of the women who help keep our homes, community, and this country together with our eyes and the lips, and this concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
I have a comment. I thank everyone for coming tonight. I just want you guys to know that as a Board, I know, and I know this for a fact, that we are fervently looking into and working very hard for Durham to make sure we take care of the policies we have. We take your opinions and your comments and your concerns very seriously. We really do. So, we're working on that. Thank you.
On May 5th, 2015, Michigan voters will be asked to approve a one-cent sales tax increase to help fund schools and much-needed roads and repairs. The Michigan Association of School Board Board of Directors voted to support the valid initiative and join the Safe Roads Yes Coalition. With the proposed increase in funding for schools and at-risk programs, as well as funding for the adequacy support study to determine the cost of educating our children, the Michigan Association of School Board members feel strongly that all school boards should support proposal one. To that end, the Michigan Association of School Boards have developed a template resolution for us to consider adapting to show our support. In the absence of our President, I'd like to send a copy of that resolution to the Board, and let's set up a study session to determine if we can support that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing?
Nothing for me this evening, beyond the fact that I should at least state that everyone in this room is a part of Southfield Public Schools community, and every word that's spoken at these meetings, they do not fall on deaf ears. We want to be partners with each of our groups of leaders and teachers and students and things, and I'm very proud to, like many of you said, be an alumni of this district. I used to say my blood runs blue, but now I guess I have to find out what blue and red mixed together, purple, I guess, my blood runs now, but, you know, I have a very, very rigorous passion for Southfield Public Schools, and so I just want all of you to keep up the fervor and the energy to help us get it right, from community advocacy groups to the like. So, I just want everyone to know when we leave here tonight that the goal is still about the work of education and supporting anyone who has anything to do with that. So.
Is there anything for you? Okay. Future meetings, I believe, of course, I put my agenda away. I know that March 17th, we are meeting at 5:30 for a special board meeting. Thank you. March 24th, 6 o'clock, student hearing, Charles Joyce Smith. Lewis?
Robinson.
Charles Smith, Joyce Robinson. And then April 14th at 7 o'clock is our regular board meeting, and no one mentioned NFA, but some of us are attending that conference later this month, so we'll report out when we return. And I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you. And the vote, all right, meeting adjourned.